Good evening, everyone. I'm Nat Fortune, your town moderator, and I'd like to ask our town clerk to call our meeting to order, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Waitley by posting attested copies of the same at the Town Office Building, Waitley Post Office, Waitley Transfer Station, and S. White Dickinson Library in said town at least seven days before the date of the meeting as within directed.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Signed, Christian Visa 52225.
All right. Thank you very much. And as always, I thank you for coming despite being warned of the meeting. May we take up, please, Article One? The first of these five articles are business that just allows our town to continue in between annual meetings.
Article One?
Go ahead.
Article One, reports of the town boards and committees. I move that the town vote to accept the annual reports of the officers of the town and to hear any other reports of the boards and committees.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. We need a majority in favor. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your card. All right. Mr. Skroski, yes, I acknowledge you.
Mr. Moderator, I hope that we dispense with the reading of the article.
All right. There's been a motion to dispense with the reading of the articles. I would like to, if I may, make my own friendly amendment that we do that for the business articles, and that my discretion of articles that are more detailed and require consideration regarding bylaws will be read in full. All those in favor, please raise your card.
Need a second?
It hasn't been seconded.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please raise your card. That's right. All right. Then, as amended, it is passed. Thank you. All right. We proceed to Article Two. Joyce?
You didn't, you voted on the amendment but not on the original article, and you didn't ask for who was opposed.
I did ask. Okay. Anyway, we're going to trade positions next year. Thank you. All right. The amendment has passed. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion carries. Do I have a motion to take up Article Two?
Mr. Moderator, I move we take up Article Two.
Second.
Article Two has been motioned and seconded. Authorization for borrowing. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, I proceed to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, it passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Three.
Second.
Article Three, Authorization for Contracts, has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? If not, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, Article Three passes by the majority.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article Four.
Second.
Article Four has been moved and seconded. Authorization for Banking Agreements. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor. All those opposed, Article Four carries by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move we take up Article Five, Authorization for Grant Applications.
Second.
Article Five has been moved and seconded. Authorization for Grant Applications. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article Five also passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Six to establish revolving fund spending limits.
Article Six has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your card.
Discussion?
Is there a discussion? Nothing you want to contribute, Fred?
No, I just, you didn't, hadn't asked for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. All those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, all right, Article Six also passes. Now, for the next one here, I would like it to be read in full, please. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article Seven, Salaries and Compensation of Elected Officers. I move that the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of the elected officers of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025, as follows. Town moderator, would you like me to read the numbers?
Yes.
All right. Everybody with a 4% cola, town moderator, 156.86 cents. Select Board Chair, $2,392.10. Select Board Member, $2,196.3. Town Clerk, $55,735.68. Assessors Chair, $2,392.10. Assessors Member, $2,196.3. Water Commissioner, $941.17. School Committee, $453.45. Elector, Oliver Smith-Will, $13.50. Board of Health Chair, $1,137.22. Board of Health Member, $941.17. Constable, $17.78 an hour, and Cemetery Commissioner, Commission Sexton, $17.78 per hour.
Second.
All right. Article Seven has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article Seven carries by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article Eight, Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2026 Water Department Operating Budget. Would you like me to read it?
Just the large print.
Just the large print. Okay. I move that the town vote to appropriate $317,926.25 from the Water Department Enterprise Fund revenues to finance the operation of the Water Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, as outlined in the printed warrant.
Second.
All right. Article Eight has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the article in its printed form? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion pass. Article Eight passes by the majority required. All right. And now, we're going to, I'm going to call upon Paul Antea, the Chair of the Town Finance Committee, to move Article Nine, and then to walk us through the various parts of this article after we receive a second. Paul, please.
Is this on?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town act and the recommendations of the Finance Committee on the fiscal year 2026 Town Operating Budget, and to raise and appropriate money for the operation of the town's departments, boards, committees, agencies, and offices, for the payment of debt service, and for all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year beginning on July 21, 2025, in the amount shown in the column captured, fiscal year 2026 operating budget as follows.
The article has been moved. Is there a second? Article has been moved and seconded, and the moderator asks the Finance Committee Chair to now walk us through the details of this article, please.
We will take this department by department, and the first one being General Government for the coming year. The request is $53,817.16 for an increase of 8.73%.
Are there questions or comments regarding the increase in the fiscal year budget for General Government? Seeing none, Paul, will you proceed?
Okay. Culture Recreation Services. The asking amount is $28,468.06 for a 15.22% increase.
Just to clarify, that's the increase in the asking amount, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw it in green, and green says go. Okay. Okay. Let's, let's walk that back a little bit. In fact, we need to walk back to General Government, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. So, the operating budget for 2026, wow. The request is $670,352.65. 5381781716 is the increase for 8.73% increase. Are there any questions, issues, comments? Thank you. Next, again, Culture Recreation Services, operating budget request is $215,462.06 for $28,460.06 increase at 15.22%. Any questions, any issues, comments?
If you have a question or comment, please raise your hand high. Seeing none, Paul, let's proceed to the next section.
Okay. Public Health. Request $125,229.32 for difference of $5,457.32 or an increase of 4.56%.
Are there any questions, comments regarding public health? All right. Having concluded that healthy discussion, shall we move on to public safety, please?
Always my favorite. Public Safety. Operating Budget, $602,705 for an increase of $67,790.72 for a 12.67% increase.
Are there questions or discussions regarding the public safety portion of this budget? Yes, please, sir. Please step up to a microphone, state your name and address for our audience at home and everyone here.
I'm Bob Smith, 303 Long Plain. I would just like someone to explain the increase in the police budget.
Is there someone here who feels prepared to address the increase in the police budget?
Well, we have our police chief standing right there, so I'm sure he is more than able to walk up to that mic and explain that.
All right. I invite our chief to do so, please. You have permission to speak?
Good evening. So, I don't have the exact numbers because I know the main part of this is based on salary increases because of the salary survey that was done. So, the overall increase to the police budget was, was only $2,000, but then the rest is all salary based on the salary survey. So, I think there's an article, they're going to be going through that in more detail as far as the salary study goes.
All right. Does that address your question, Bob? Thank you. Okay. We also have someone from the Personnel Committee who can address questions in general regarding that later. Paul, shall we move on to Public Works?
We will move on to Public Works. The request is $517,090.84 for an increase of $31,212.84. That represents a 6.42% increase.
Questions, comments regarding Public Works? Seeing none, shall we proceed to Insurance and Benefits, please?
Insurance and Benefits. Operating Budget Quest, $1,027,919.91 for an increase of $112,587.11 for an increase of 12.30%.
All right. Is there questions or discussion regarding insurance and benefits? Seeing none, please proceed to Unclassified.
Sure. Unclassified. Request $79,798. Increase of $4,076 or 5.38%.
Is there any questions, discussion regarding the items in the unclassified category? Seeing none, shall we proceed, please, to Education?
Mr. Moderator, would you like me to do it, to take this school by school, or the whole amount?
I think I would welcome school by school. Thank you.
Okay. Starting with the Waitley Elementary School. We have an, we have an operating budget request of $2,262,599 for an increase of $207,785, a 10.11% increase.
Shall we continue with the other two, please?
Fine. Frontier Regional School. Request $1,091,492 for an increase of $55,854, a 5.39%. And you can see how they come to that just below it. Franklin County Tech School, total operating budget, $264,592.60. The difference is minus $57,381.40, representing a negative 17.82%. Smith Vocational School has, we do not have that in the line item.
All right.
The total operating budget for all schools, $3,618,683.60 for difference of $206,257.60 or an increase of 6.04%.
Are there any questions, desires for clarification, concern, or discussion regarding any of the school budgets outlined? Yes, please, sir. Step up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Stand up straight. John Lukin, 7 Moskowski Circle. Any questions? I would assume that the $207,000 increase in the Waitley School, Elementary School is the labor contract salaries?
At this point, the moderator would invite the superintendent of the school district to speak if they so choose.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Darius Modesto, your Superintendent of Schools. Actually, the labor contract is not the major move for that. We put a placeholder in prior to negotiations closing. The elementary's budget is a little high, and we recognize that. The big needs that fall in that is that we were going to walk into a year this year where we were going to have a difficult budget. A level service budget was 6.9%. And that's because we used, last year, we brought down the budget using Esser money, which was the government's, the last bit, the last money's coming from COVID to help fund schools. We had saved it all, and we had to use it, and that's what the Trump administration's been taking back from schools recently, but we had spent it last year. And we also had to, we had to take money from early childhood of $22,000. So, that was $40,000, and then $22,000 from early childhood, because we're having more students coming in with higher needs from the community, so they fall under special education, which they are not required to pay. So, we pick up with that as a community cost. So, those were two things that rose that to about 7% going in. And then, we have two new students coming into our districts that require a one-to-one IA. Okay? Having two in the same year is just bad luck. It doesn't usually happen in a school this size. It is the needs of the students that has to be met in their IEP. So, there's two ways this, you know, the school committee had debated over this. There's two ways to approach that. We take services from other parts of the building in higher position for that, or we go to the town and ask for more money. So, that, those are basically the drivers of why you're at, you know, why you're just at over 10% this year from the elementary school. So, and we do understand it's a bigger ask than usual this year. It does fit in. Thank you, Tech, for having the reduction to help us out there. We did apply rural aid that we got from the state as well to help bring this down as well, but it is a higher cost than, I would say that we're comfortable with, but given the other option, we thought it was best to bring it forward.
All right. Thank the superintendent for that clarification. Does that address your question, sir? All right. Is there anyone else with a different question or concern? Please, I recognize the gentleman with the card.
My name is Tom Maher. I live at 28 Poplar Hill Road in West Waitley. I'm a 35-year member of the Finance Committee who was not reappointed by the moderator this year for various reasons. I have a problem with, that the Waitley Elementary budget only went up, or went up 10.1%, but the Police Department budget went up 22.6%. And, you know, salary adjustments are not the answer to the question. We shouldn't be spending more money on the Police Department than we're spending on our kids percentage-wise.
All right. Thank you, sir. If you'll stay at the microphone, I'd like to answer a clarifying question. So, you would like to reopen the discussion regarding the Police Department budget at this time?
I'm just making a statement, not, not ask, I assume that when we get to the Personnel Committee report, we're going to talk about this.
Is there anyone from, sorry, there is no, I think that we're talking about the, not the Personnel Committee report, but we're talking about the general?
Salary report.
Okay.
We're not going to talk about it.
There's no article on that. Is there anyone from the Personnel Committee who would like to speak to the general review of salaries that was undertaken this year? Please, go ahead.
When you look at a percentage increase, the percentage increase is looking at the total budget, right, of both salary and expenses. If you were to look at the Waitley Elementary School, the portion that their salary relates to the overall budget and general expenses, it's different than what the Police Department would be, where they don't have as much of a general expense. It is primarily on the salary. So, any adjustments in the salary is going to look like a higher percentage increase, only because salary makes up a larger portion of their expenses.
It must be a very large increase in salary to go up that high.
As, as the chief had mentioned, I believe the dollar amount was about 60,000, around 60,000 in increase for salary as opposed to the general expense of 2,000.
How, can I ask how that is split up? I mean, is it 60,000 to the chief, or is it?
No.
The moderator accepts the question. Is there someone on the Finance Committee who would like to speak to that in more detail?
Well, I don't have that information in front of me because it's not my understanding today, and I don't see it here, is that we were going to vote on the step increase for all personnel in town. And I'm not quite sure what happened to that. The Finance Committee voted the initial adjustment, and that, that initial adjustment was extensive. And it came from simply a consulting firm that was hired by the Personnel Committee that came in and told us what we should be paying our town employees. And they created a step system for our town employees that was near equivalent to what a step system is in the School Department. This was a consulting company. Consulting companies give you what you ask for them. If they were asked to produce some type of a program to increase pay for our town employees, that's what they, that's what they did. And the Finance Committee, which votes democratically, majority rule, the Finance Committee voted for it in the affirmative by the majority.
All right. So, thank you, Paul. The Chair of the Finance Committee has outlined the first step that occurred in that process for, in the process that then brought recommendations to the Finance Committee. And I'd like to ask the town administrator to discuss the following steps that were taken after receiving the external report.
Sure. So, just for context for all town meeting members, every time, or in the previous years, whenever we've gone through a budget development, the town has looked at and done a salary survey for all departments, and looked at how the employees were being paid in relation to the market, in relation to comparable communities. And it meant that the town was having to do the work every single year, and go to the Personnel Committee, and make adjustments on an annual basis. What was done this last year is instituting a grade and step process so that it creates a structure so that in future years, we don't have to continually do a reevaluation. We already have it built in, and we can look at that as a policy in order to identify what the budget increase or the budget requirements will be for each of those departments, as would be made to the Finance Committee. So, with the consultant, the consultant provided the outline of the analysis, which is the same exact analysis that is done every year, and based on that analysis, put together that grade table and that step table that then went to the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee did not take it as a, this is what we're going to utilize. The Personnel Committee actually made further revisions and adjustments based on the realities of the town, the departments, and the employees. And then, that, that step in that grade plan has been brought to the Select Board, and it will be put into the personnel policies, which are an action of the Select Board as opposed to Town Meeting. All it is, is a guidance document for us in our development of the budget. Town Meeting appropriates and decides on the budget being requested. So, all of that is already been evaluated and put into the budgets the same exact way that we do in all previous years for salaries. It's just now we have a more, a guidance document to better identify how we're going to pay employees for future years as well.
All right. So, is there further questions or need for clarification regarding this process?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Antea, please.
Yeah, I would just like the town administrator to sort of clarify, if he could. When we ended our last meeting for the Finance Committee, it was clear that that step process that was recommended by the consultant firm was going to go on town floor, was going to be discussed on town floor, was going to be voted on, on town floor. So, where did things change?
Sure, I can answer that. So, the, the standard is if the town has a personnel bylaw, then it means that that has to go into the bylaw, and bylaws are under the jurisdiction of Town Meeting. We do not have a personnel bylaw. We have personnel policies. The, the general bylaws were drafted in a way and approved by Town Meeting that says that the Select Board develops personnel policies, and the policies are therefore voted on and amended by our Select Board as opposed to Town Meeting. Some towns have personnel policies where it's by their executive board, and in other communities, they have it as a personnel bylaw where it's then the legislative body of the Town Meeting that does the changes to the bylaw.
Okay, I understand that, but that was not what was described to the Finance Committee.
That's correct.
I believe the Chair of the Finance Committee has made his point. Is there an additional point that needs to be made? All right. Thank you, then. So,
Another question?
I would like to know if there's anyone else who has a question first. Yes, please, you in the front row. Oh, well, yes, I'm looking to see if there are any new questions before we go back to people who've already spoken. Are you one of those people with a new question? Yes.
Jerry Lemon, 27, Gray Oak Lane. I was a member of the, or am a member of the Finance Committee, but also the liaison to the Personnel Committee.
You need to treat the, I understand your desire to address You need to treat the, I understand your desire to address the audience. If you wish to do so, you may need to pick up the microphone because it's a directional one. You need to treat it like an ice cream cone that you don't want the ice cream to drop.
I haven't done that for a while. I'll just leave it where it is if you don't mind. Just, I'd like to at least clarify the concept of the step versus the wage adjustments that were recommended and then eventually worked through with the Personnel Committee for recommendations to the Finance Committee. The step situation that's being discussed is a, basically a, an approach over a multi-year period, there are 10 of them, in which it's possible if the Finance Committee, Personnel Committee, Select Board agree to bring to Town Meeting, could potentially increase by 2.5% per year. The overriding and overreaching factor that came out of the analysis that was done by the consultant was that our town employees relative to their peers were substantially below even the average wage. And that becomes a problem on two levels. First, the COLAs that had been approved over the last four years compared to the regional and national levels of inflation, which COLAs are supposed to incorporate, put us behind over a four-year period of roughly 44% compared to what our employees are making. That's how we got to the 4% COLA amount as a recommendation. More importantly, the wages being paid were grossly under, repegged, adjusted, call it right-sized, to 75% of the average of what's being paid in a number of communities. I believe there were around 10 of them or so. In addition to that, these positions were specifically reassessed and graded relative to the responsibility of the position and the length of service in the position, but importantly, the amount of value that each of these employee positions brings to the town. And what we found initially was that the police officers, because somebody brought that up initially, very good question, were being compensated at the same level as some of the other positions in the town that were more administrative in nature, did not involve risk factors, did not involve keeping our town safe, and did not involve the individuals having to put their lives on the line. And so the Personnel Committee went through this in four or five separate meetings and said, we have to right-size this. Let's get this right, and then we can use the step positions down the road if we choose to say, great, this year we're going to do a step and everybody gets a 2.5% raise. But the first goal was to fix the COLA issue because again, we were 44% below the averages of the indices that we reviewed. And the second, more important one was to say, how does this work? Because what we can't afford in the town is to lose your part-time police officer who can someday be the full-time police officer to another town over a $3 or $4 wage delta. Doesn't make sense. We need to take care of the people. And it was the belief, belief unanimously within the Personnel Committee that this was the appropriate time to come to Town Meeting and say, we really need to fix this. It's been dragging for a number of years and it's time for a change. And that's what we incorporated into the budgets. That's what we presented to the Finance Committee, which passed by majority and then went to the Select Board for their review and now is here at Town Meeting for you. So I hope this clarifies, but I wanted you to understand a little bit about the intensity of focus that went into this discussion and the importance of it for you to consider tonight.
Thank you, Jerry, for that clarification. At this point, the moderator would like to either recognize any people who have new questions or concerns, or anyone who's previously spoken who has a concern they've not yet raised. Seeing none, I assume that we have closed our discussion regarding the Police Budget and are prepared, having discussed all the sections in the budget for the town. So is there one more? That's right. My mistake.
Mr. Moderator.
Please go ahead.
This is debt service. Operating budget request is $1,000. The difference is negative $48,660 for a percentage difference of minus 97.99%. That's what happens when you pay off your loans. Okay. Full, our town operating budget, wait, do you want to ask for...
Does anyone have a question about how we paid off our loans? Well done. Okay. Please proceed.
Therefore, total town operating budget for 2026, $6,858,242.09 for an increase of $460,998.71 for 7.21% increase.
All right. So the motion has been put forward and seconded, and then there's been discussion of the various items in the categories here. Are there any other general questions, concerns, or clarifications that need to be provided before proceeding to a vote on the budget, on the article as a whole?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please.
I just briefly want to...
Identify yourself if you would not please.
Julie Waggoner, Chair of the Select Board, briefly want to appreciate Mr. Maher's question about education, and it should not be construed that the town in any way devalues education. It's extremely important and we place a high, a high value on it. And thank you for bringing up that question.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? If not, it's time to proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your cards. All those opposed? The motion carries by the majority required. It would not be appropriate for the moderator to speak at this time regarding appointments or non-reappointments to Finance Committee members, but please let it never be construed that the moderator fails to value the years of service that all of the volunteers for the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, and the Planning Board do for free on behalf of this town, and the moderator is personally grateful to every and every one of you who has served or is serving, regardless of the conditions or decisions that need to be made regarding reappointments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10 to approve the transfer of free cash to reduce the tax levy.
Article 10 has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Article 10 is open for discussion. Seeing none, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Article 10 passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 11 that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year 25 free cash to the Vehicle Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions, concerns, discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $20,000 from available funds fiscal year 25 free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions, discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Article 12 passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $58,000 for a sick leave buyback for a Whately Elementary School employees.
Second.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 13 has passed by the majority vote required. I would like to request that Article 14 be read out in full, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds fiscal year 25 free cash, the necessary funds to pay costs of various capital projects, including as applicable, equipping of capital items to be acquired, and all incidental and related costs for such capital projects. All is described in the chart below, each numbered item to be considered a separate appropriation, and with the budget and amount to be spent only for the stated purpose.
Second.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded. You will see below the various items that are listed. These include environmental monitoring in wells and old landfill, air pack replacements for the fire department, mini-split heat pumps for the elementary school, storm window installation for the Town Hall, repainting the building interior for the Town Hall.
Exterior.
Exterior. There you go. Redesign and new hosting for Whately.org and repainting the lower-level interior of the library. Are there questions, concerns, discussion regarding any of these capital project items? Yes, please, sir, step up to the microphone. Identify yourself.
Brian Fitzgerald, 216 River Road.
Yes, Brian.
So I'm looking at this air pack replacement for the fire department. I see it was requested in FY '25, request amount I think was $202,000, assuming that didn't get approved. I'm wondering if we have applied for any grants for the town to receive equipment, education, or anything for the fire department.
The moderator would invite the Fire Department Chief to speak to this if they so choose.
Chief Kennedy, Whately Fire Department, I think I've met most of the people here. We have vigorously, we have vigorously gone after grants for the majority of our fire department purchases, especially the larger ones, particularly the air pack grants. We've been in a final round of selection, which they call peer review through a fire, assistance of firefighters grant, and it's a highly competitive grant. Three years in a row, we made it to peer review and we're not awarded. And we've just reached a point where our packs are 25 years old and we really need to move ahead for safety reasons. We currently have three packs that are out of service for maintenance issues. And, you know, if it's something on the pack that breaks like a clip or something, you know, on a strap, it's not a big deal. But if it's something that's integral to our life safety, whether it be our mask or a diaphragm and a regulator which can become brittle over, over time, it really becomes a liability for the town and a safety issue for our personnel.
Thank you, Chief. Does that address your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding the capital projects? Yes, please. Yes, ma'am.
Cynthia Allen, Laurel Mountain Road. Didn't the library lower level recently get repainted? Why are we doing it again?
Is there someone who can speak authoritatively to that?
Well, we have a member of the Library Commission.
My name's Bob Smith. I'm the Chair of the Library Trustees. The answer is no, it hasn't been repainted.
Does that address your question? All right. Anyone have a color preference? No? Okay. You're free to paint at your will. All right. Assuming this passes, sorry, premature. All those in favor of Article 14, including free choice of library color, raise your card. All those opposed? Article 14 passes by the majority required. I'd like Article, I think Article 15 may be read in summary.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article 15, that the town hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Budget and vote to appropriate the Community Preservation Fund to the sum of $10,750 for committee administrative expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and to reserve the future appropriations, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, with each item to be considered separately, separate appropriations as follows. And that's the part I don't have to read, I think.
All right. Are there, Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions regarding what's been read or what's in the full written report for the article? Seeing done, we move to a vote. All those in favor of Article 15 is written. All those opposed? Article 15 passes by the majority required. We move now to proposed bylaw amendments. It is the moderator's belief that those need to be read in full, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 16, General Bylaw Amendment, Annual Town Election and Meeting Dates. I move that the town vote to amend the town's General Bylaws, Chapter 49, Town Meetings and Elections, as printed in the warrant for this meeting, provided, however, that any person elected to office prior to the first annual election held after the change of the election date from June to April shall continue to hold said office and to perform the duties thereof until the expiration of the term for which said person was elected or until said person otherwise vacates such office. And the term of a person elected to succeed such a prior elected officer shall not include the period during which the prior elected officer continues to hold office.
Second.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions? All right. It seems that, no, I reserve comment. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 16 passes by the majority required. Article 17, please.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article 17, General Bylaw Amendment on Animals. I move that the town vote to amend the town's General Bylaws, Chapter 65, Animals, by making the revision set forth in Appendix A of the printed warrant for this meeting and authorize the town clerk to renumber the applicable sections and subsections accordingly.
Second.
All right. Article 17 has been moved and seconded, and the moderator would like to start by inviting the town clerk to make a highly appropriate announcement to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In conjunction with this, well, the article's pretty self-explanatory, but I just wanted to say congratulations to Toby, the dog from Poplar Hill Road. He won our first ever Whately Dog of the Year contest. He was tag number 270. I don't think their human is present, but, so Toby will get tag number one. He will have an option to be on the Memorial Day float in the parade next year. His picture is going to be in the annual town report next year, and he's going to get a cute little basket full of doggy treats. Thank you.
All right. Please remember to register your pets. Okay. In that regard, then, is there any general discussion or questions regarding Article Nothing Toby wants to contribute? No? All right. In that case, raise your, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed? All those opposed? Article 17 passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 18. I move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws, Chapter 46, Revolving Funds, by adding to the table in a new Section 46-5, a new fire department revolving fund, as shown in the printed warrant for this meeting, said fund to be effective for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and to set the fiscal year '26 spending limit at $25,000.
Second.
Article 18 has been moved and seconded. Are there questions regarding Article 18? All those in favor, then, please raise your card. All those opposed? Article 18 passes by the majority required.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 19. 19, the approval of transfer of free cash for the fire department revolving fund. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,095 from available funds fiscal year '25 free cash to the fire department revolving fund.
Second.
All right, Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? If not, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor, raise your card. Brilliant. All those opposed? All right, Article 19 passes as well by the majority required. And on these ones, I now invite the chair of the planning board to make a motion regarding Article 20 and Article 21.
Good evening, Mr.
One at a time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and my friends and neighbors. My name is Brian Chikis. I'm the chair of the Waitley Planning Board. I move Article 20, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Flood Plane Overlay District. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Waitley zoning bylaw and zoning map by replacing Section 171-27 Flood Hazard Overlay District Regulations with a new Section 171-27 Flood Plane Overlay District, as provided in Appendix B of the printed warrant for this meeting, and as more fully described in the Planning Board Report to Select Board in the Annual Town Meeting Booklet, provided as a handout to all voters at this meeting, and by adopting a new Flood Insurance Rate Map, or FIRM, and which text and maps are on file with the town clerk.
Second.
Okay, Article 20 has been moved and seconded. This article requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Are there questions regarding Article 20? Yes, please. Step up to the microphone, identify yourself, sir.
Greg Sweetser, 15 North Street. We see -- we do see some overflow of the river down below us, and in this flood plane map, which I'm not exactly sure what's what, but flood insurance, if you have a mortgage on your property and you end up in a flood plane, your insurance is gonna double, if not triple. If it's required by the bank to have flood insurance, it's on the homeowner. And I know we may be looking at one in 100-year events, but I'm just saying, this could get expensive for the people, and would that change?
All right, so, thank you for that clarification. Was there a question you wish to pose as well? The question is, how is that taken into account? Yes, please, Peter?
Have they notified the people that this will affect, put it that way?
Well, I'll answer -- well, I'll give context first, and then the chair can explain if notification was given. Just so you understand, we already have a flood insurance map that's already in place. It's out of date, and that's why the town is being asked to update that particular layer or that designation. So it's -- and there are only, I believe, four properties that were not in the flood zones that are being added in based on new modeling, but I'll ask the chair if there's any additional -- and notification that may have happened.
There was no specific notification, but perhaps it would be helpful if I provided some additional context on what's driving this bylaw?
Certainly, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The National Flood Insurance Program was created in 1968.
Okay.
Maybe not do that.
Maybe don't do that.
Yeah.
Maybe not do that. So, the NFP, National Flood Insurance Program, was created by an act of Congress in 1968. It has two purposes: to share the risk of flood losses through flood insurance, and to reduce flood damages by restricting flood plane development. It's the purpose of the NFP. Being a participant in the NFP, the National Flood Insurance Program, is entirely voluntary. Waitley elected to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. So, there we are. Now, Congress limits the availability of flood insurance to communities that adopt adequate land use and control measures with effective enforcement provisions to reduce flood damages by restricting development in areas exposed to flooding. All right? Now, all NFP communities agree to locally adopt and enforce NFP requirements articulated in federal law. It's part of being in the NFP program as we have opted in. Congress wrote the rules. FEMA, to the extent FEMA continues to exist, FEMA administers the program, and the state of Massachusetts, all states, then assist their communities to enforce the program. That's background on tonight's bylaw before all of us tonight. Now, in 2020, the state launched an effort, driven by changes in NFP at the federal level, to ensure that all NFP communities like Waitley had bylaws in place that met NFP requirements. Now, this is a long -- sort of a long answer in context to your question, and I'm sorry, I know people probably just want to get home, but -- so, we launched this effort in 2020. We started doing our own work to bring our bylaws into compliance with the NFP program. They were not in compliance. Okay? So, we did this work, starting with a zoning template from the state. We drew on expertise from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to do this work. It's taken us quite some time to work through all the details. Started in 2020, okay? And we believe we finally completed the work with the bylaw presented to all of you tonight. It's -- we didn't have unlimited amounts of time to bring our bylaws into compliance. We're reaching a deadline where if we don't have our bylaws in compliance with NFP requirements, we may no longer be able to obtain national flood insurance. So, all of those costs, like people in town may no longer even be able to get flood insurance, and that could be a real problem. So, there's a real motivation to do this. I won't try to summarize the impact of the article, but I basically, I just want to say that if -- to know whether you may need to comply with this bylaw, basically, I want to address, how do you know whether this bylaw affects you? So, in your booklet, there is this map that you saw at the very in-color, Proposed Flood Insurance Rate Map. This is what Pete said is a outdated map, but it's the only map that's in force today that defines the so-called, what's called here, the FEMA flood zones. Those areas in blue on this map, luckily it was printed in color, all those areas in blue have been determined through whatever, you know, magic they go through to figure out where these -- these are the high-risk, call them the flood-prone areas in town, the ones that, once in 100 years, have a chance of flooding. That's what these blue zones indicate. So, if you own property in those blue zones, and you plan to develop on it, then you're affected by this bylaw, and there's going to be additional scrutiny over any proposed development in those blue zones. So, there are people, property owners, who are directly impacted, but all of us are affected, because what happens in flood zones affects people upstream. What affects in -- what happens in flood zones affects people downstream. Okay? So, the goal of this is to bring our bylaws in compliance, and frankly, to discourage, but not prohibit, development in those FEMA flood zones. Okay? So, we're not trying to say you can't do anything there. What we're trying to say is that this new bylaw, again, follows a state template. It's gone through copious review. The Conservation Commission plays a critical role in the local decision-making. Conservation Commission has reviewed and endorsed this change, this updated bylaw. But the essential impact of the bylaw is to ensure there's more scrutiny on anything happening in those specific areas. Okay? I hope that's helpful for -- and the planning board really -- I would strongly encourage you all to vote for this. You're all a stakeholder, whether you own property in those flood zones, or you're upstream or downstream from them, which in one way, shape, or form, we all are. And there are a lot more impacts of flooding, you know, now and in the future. Thank you.
All right, I thank the planning board chair for approving our stream of consciousness, both upstream and down, and wonder if there's anyone else who has a follow-up question or concern. Please, sir.
I'm Scott Jackson, 340 Haydenville Road. I'm also chair of the Conservation Commission, and I just wanted to speak up to say that Conservation Commission supports this bylaw, this proposed bylaw. And I'll also just add that even though this bylaw is essential, if anybody in town wants to participate in the flood insurance program, it doesn't significantly increase the amount of protection in flood plains beyond what's already protected under the Wetlands Protection Act, which is administered by the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any remaining or unaddressed concerns? Please, sir.
Brian Fitzgerald, 216 River Road. I am affected in this flood plain. My question is, if there are structures in that area now, and it's a FEMA flood zone, is my property federally protected, or is that now an additional insurance fee for me to have to pay and get flood insurance? So, if we're in the FEMA, we've adopted this for one reason or another, are we federally insured and covered now that we are in that flood zone?
Brant, is that a question you can address concisely here?
Well, I don't know about concisely. That's -- but I think I can address that question. So, first of all, you don't always have to get flood insurance. You cannot get federal flood insurance, except in a community that is a participant, as we are in the National Flood Insurance Program. Okay? So, that's part of your question, Ryan. Okay? But you also raised this point about, you know, you're in there and you've got a structure in there. So, basically, passing this new bylaw, as I hope we will do tonight, does not affect any existing structures in these flood zones. You're not going to have to go do anything. It's very specific about targeting new development, new construction, or any man-made changes in these zones after the bylaw is passed. Okay? So, Ryan, if you want to do something new, you want to change your building, you want to regrade your land, pave something over, build a heliport, now, that development activity would require the new level of scrutiny required under this bylaw.
All right, but your existing heliport is protected. Does that address all your concerns? All right, thank you. If -- unless there are any other new questions or new issues to be raised, I'd like to proceed to a vote. All those in favor, and again, it requires a two-thirds majority, please raise your card and leave them up. All right, all those opposed? The Article 20 passes by the two-thirds requirement.
So, you're not done with me yet. I move Article 21, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Marijuana Product Light Manufacturer. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Waitley zoning bylaw as it relates to defining and permitting marijuana product light manufacturer as a use, as provided in Appendix C of the printed warrant for this meeting, and is more fully described in the Planning Board Report to Select Board in the Annual Town Meeting Booklet, provided as a handout to all voters at this meeting, and which text is on file with the town clerk.
Second.
All right, Article 21 has been moved and seconded. There's been a request from Attorney Isaac Fleischer of representing the clients who originally put forward the request for this change, to address in a clear and concise manner, those are his words, what the purpose of this amendment would be, article. And so, I invite him to speak at this time.
Hi, I'm Isaac Fleischer, not a Waitley resident, addresses Blackberry Lane in Northampton, Massachusetts, and I also have the manager of the original company bringing the proposal forward, and I think he's gonna speak first.
All right, very well.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jared Glanzberger, and I'm the CEO of DMC Cannabis, a local, independently-owned cannabis manufacturing company right here in Waitley. I started DMC with a simple vision, to build a reliable, professional cannabis cultivation and manufacturing business, to serve the brands you see on dispensary shelves across the state. We're focused behind the scenes, producing the oils, flour, cartridges that brands use to make their products. Think of us like a specialty ingredient supplier, or co-packer in the food industry. We don't always have our name on the bag, but we're trusted to deliver high-quality products on time every time. What makes us different is that we're -- we've always chosen the hard, sustainable path. We grow a large portion of our cannabis outdoors, using sun-grown methods that reduce energy and allow us to operate at scale with a lower environmental footprint. We've invested heavily in safety, compliance, and professional manufacturing standards, because we're here for the long haul. We've operated in Waitley legally and responsibly under the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission since 2021. Over the years, we've grown into one of the state's top product manufacturers, trusted by over a dozen brands for extraction, formulation, and packaging services, and I'm proud to say we're providing good-paying jobs in our community for entry-level workers, skilled technicians, managers, and directors, some of whom live in this community. Which brings me to why I'm here today. We're seeking to create more opportunities for investment and jobs here, and to use common sense to align town bylaws with -- for cannabis with other similar activities. Right now, activities like food processing in commercial kitchens, bottling, assembly, and packaging plants, and hemp processing are already allowed in the commercial zone. The kind of work we believe ought to be allowed in the commercial zone as well, processing cannabis plant material and extracted oils, filling carts, labeling packages is very similar. It's clean, low-impact, and done indoors under strict regulatory oversight. This is about making products for the state legal wholesale market in a professional, secure setting. We understand concerns that sometimes come with cannabis operations, but I want to emphasize that the goal for the amendment is to enable cannabis companies to continue to be a quiet, compliant, and positive presence in town, providing jobs, investment, and occupying and improving properties. We've already done this on River Road, and believe there is more opportunity for folks like us in town. We're proposing a change to the bylaw that would enable product assembly and packagers to occupy space in the commercial zone. This would increase the set of potential lessees or buyers for properties, potentially increasing property value, and a host of economic opportunities. But at its heart, this is about fairness, treating cannabis product assembly and packaging like any other product assembly and packaging activity. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions about our business, our work in Waitley, or our proposed zoning amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my intention to open it up for general questions and discussion after giving the Select Board and the Planning Board an opportunity to Select Board and the Planning Board an opportunity to comment regarding their recommendations, should they wish to do so. Brent, does the Planning Board wish to say anything regarding its non-recommendation? Not favor nor against. It's a neutral stance.
Correct. I think we did a wonderful job in the Planning Board report articulating our point of view. I do want to perhaps just add the point that this bylaw was brought forward, while bylaw amendments typically originate with the Planning Board, this came in from an individual that's not a resident. That's not unacceptable, abnormal. It's perfectly reasonable for members outside the Planning Board to, to bring amendments to us. I want to underscore the fact that the Planning Board deliberated at quite some length about this, and ultimately concluded that there was some, some benefit, but we, because none of us live in the commercial district, which would primarily be affected by this bylaw. We wanted to defer to the judgment of town meeting generally and, and commercial dwellers in the commercial district to make their point of view known.
And could you clarify what commercial district we're talking about?
Yes, thank you. For those who don't live and breathe the Waitley zoning map the way, you know, Planning Board members do, I shouldn't assume you've all just memorized it, right? The vast majority of land in Waitley is zoned agricultural slash residential, where most of us live, most of us farm. There is some areas in town that are zoned commercial. These are mostly following roots five and 10, approximately starting around Claverack, heading south to the, the southern border with Hatfield. There are a couple of other pockets of commercial zoning areas, like around Exit 35, I-91, Sugarloaf Shops, which was sort of motivating this bylaw, the Waitley Diner Zone Commercial, Zanonis, little pockets of commercial around. There's an industrial district, like you've heard of Cavestro, and the zoning, and where Yankee Candle's factory is off Christian, that's in an industrial district, but they're relatively limited industrial and commercial, industrial districts in town. So there are five, five zones.
Thank you for the primer. Does anyone on the Select Board wish to speak to this article at this time?
You want to?
It's my understanding that there are areas of land that, that the, that the marijuana product light manufacturer organization could obtain to, to use. And what they're asking, if I understand correctly, is that we change the zoning to make it more convenient for them, rather than that they go and get a piece of land that's appropriate for the use that they want to put it to. Is that correct?
I hesitate to begin a back-and-forth, but yes, I think a clarification is needed.
Thank you. To clarify, what's being proposed here is actually a new distinct use from marijuana product manufacturing. Marijuana product manufacturing is a category defined in the state regulations. It's extremely broad, covers a really broad spectrum of activities. What we're proposing for the commercial district, this, this addition of the word "light" manufacturing, it excludes any, any use of hazardous, toxic materials. So the kind of solvents that are typically used for the more heavy-duty processing. What would be allowed under the light manufacturing would primarily be, as Jared said, more similar to like bottling, assembly of, of hardware, that sort of thing. So it's, it's not, it's not just a matter of convenience. It's what we're trying to do is carve out a new and separate use that, that doesn't have any of the, the impact that the more traditional manufacturing would.
All right. We're opening up now the floor to anyone who has a question. Certainly, yes, please. Yes, just to step right up to the microphone, please identify yourself.
J.D. Ross, 177 State Road. I'm a member of the Planning Board, and they came before us about this. But people need to understand that they're asking for a change in all commercially-zoned properties in Waitley. It's not just one location. So my own feelings aside, like I have a piece of property on Egypt Road. I could have this use, this allowed use, on my property, Jip Road, which is basically a residential neighborhood. It's not everything, it's not always just up at the Sugarloaf Shops. It's elsewhere where there's people that are living next to it. So people need to understand that. That's all.
All right. Any other people? I, I would acknowledge, in, in order here, we will hear from the lady here, and then the Select Board member, and then the Finance Committee member. Please.
I'm Judy Markland, 106 North Street, longtime veteran of the Planning Board. And I was on the board when the original manufacturing bylaw, can't, marijuana manufacturing bylaw was written and approved. I strongly urge the town to vote against this. I think there are serious flaws in the bylaw itself, and also in the broader impact that it would cause on the town as a whole. Within the bylaw, one change that this would make is that the light manufacturing would have the same 20-foot setback that commercial marijuana use has in the bylaw. All other men, all other marijuana uses have a 50-foot setback. This is rear setback. When we first wrote the marijuana bylaw, the Planning Board, I want to say gagged a little bit about this setback at only 20 feet. To put it in perspective, the town requires a 20-foot setback between a driveway and the lot line. This is not very big. This is a manufacturing operation, a processing operation, if you call it. It would apply, it would set a dangerous precedent, but I think it has no place in anything to do with processing. We would not have approved it for commercial use, except that we thought long and hard and realized that, okay, these things will be packaged, they're not going to be processed. It's, it's like any other pure retail. We would not have approved it for light manufacturing.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
I haven't finished.
Oh, sorry.
That's just the easy part. I would note also that almost all the commercial land in Waitley is bounded by agricultural, residential land to the rear. Secondly, the, the applicants have stated that their process for manufacturing processing is very safe, and I'm sure that's true. But there's no facility for inspection to ensure that it stays safe over time. And zoning is good for siting. It's lousy for ongoing adherence, to ensure adherence with zoning. They say the state will inspect, but the state will inspect for its light manufacturing regulations, which, as has been pointed out, are very broad and apply to all sorts of manufacturing. Thirdly, we don't have enough commercial space in town as it is. I think everybody recognizes that. The Visioning Survey that was undertaken made it clear that the town wants more. You only get more by taking away from agres. The town has been unwilling to do that. So by adopting this, you're more or less reducing the space you have for activities that create foot traffic. And lastly, the particular site for this, at the Sugarloaf Shops, is an area that's, the town has spent some time studying for new commercial activity and development. There's, there's a study that's been done. The town will be working with FERCog this year to try and develop some zoning to encourage more commercial activity there. The Sunderland and Deerfield are planning a bike and walking trail right past there, taking a spot and increasing the marijuana focus there. At this time, I think is precisely the wrong time. I see no benefit to Waitley, or no net benefit to Waitley by this bylaw. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. We move now to Fred, I believe you were next.
Yeah. The Select Board considered this and, and chose an unfavorable recommendation. Our debate largely centered around Judy's third point, and that is, the town has very limited commercial space. And to turn any of that over to a manufacturing process, because this is not limited to the site, the Sugarloaf Shop, this is a general, as J.D. Ross indicated, this is an entire town bylaw when the train passes. This would cover any commercial area in town, and we could have marijuana light manufacturing spots that pop up, that may or may not be as scrupulous about the safety as gentlemen in Sugarloaf Shops appears to be. As Judy indicated, that we don't, there's no inspection protocol specified, and again, we're not being asked to pass this for a, for that location. We're being asked to pass it for the entire town, and I think that it would be bad to turn over potentially our limited commercial space to manufacturing operations, which should be in an industrial area.
All right. Paul, I believe you were next.
Sure. My question, I guess it's clarification. Mr. Glanzberger, you had, I think you made the comment that commercial land in town would now be attractive to other facilities, such as yours. Is that true?
Mr. Glanzberger, would you care to comment at this time?
I suppose so, yeah. That if this were allowable, that there might be other people like us that would be interested in investing in a similar way.
Okay. So, so the follow-up to that, you're in the industry, you know what's going on out there. Are there other individuals, other manufacturers like you clamoring to get into space that we would have available, should this pass?
That's a great question. The industry is really struggling right now. I would say we're one of the few groups that are doing well enough to have capital at our, at our disposal to expand. There may be others that are looking to expand, but it's sort of hard to say specifically, you know, is there somebody specifically looking at Waitley as a, as a place to cite? I'm not sure. I can't say, but, yeah.
Yes, please. Behind Brent. Sir.
John looking again. I, in all this, I'm not, I don't have my nose buried in the zoning bylaws, but would this, at the Sugarloaf Shops, is what they want to do an allowable use for a special permit?
Brent?
In all cases, were this kind of use to be established in any of the allowable districts per this bylaw, commercial, commercial, industrial, or industrial? It would first have to undergo a public hearing through the Zoning Board of Appeals and obtain a special permit. So that would entail notification to a butters. It would not be a secret thing. Issuance of special permits is discretionary, so, yes.
All right. Could you stay there, please? The moderator has a severe confusion on this. Some of you have spoken as if this is adding to the abilities of a commercial district. Others have spoken as if it would convert from commercial to manufacturing. Could you clarify which of these is the case?
I wish I'd paid you to ask me that question, but now I've saved myself a bunch of money.
All right.
Because indeed, I think I'd like to clarify for everybody, given some of the statements that have been made, that what zoning does is, first of all, we, we define areas of land, and we call them particular zones, like a, a, a commercial zone, or an agricultural, residential zone. And then we say, what kinds of things are allowed, under what conditions, in those various zones? So for example, in the commercial zone, in, in parcels lying within our commercial district, we allow things like self-storage facilities, of which there are at least two that I can think of. All right? We are not turning over or converting the commercial district from areas where all, many things, and believe me, you don't want to give you the list, of all the kinds of things that can be done in Waitley's commercial district. But generally, it's not a problem. Like, again, Waitley is not known as the self-storage capital of Massachusetts because all you can do in there is self-storage facilities. It happens to be one of many things, and a couple of businesses have set up to do that. But you can also do, you know, Tom's Hot Dogs. You can do muffins, right? You can do a lot of different things. This is, and, and this is the way it is, right? We just set the rules. Right now, in commercial districts, there is a flat-out prohibition on marijuana manufacturing, full stop. If you want to do any kind of marijuana manufacturing in the commercial district, or agricultural or residential, you may not even ask for permission. It is prohibited. If we do not pass this bylaw, which is a, is an outcome, right? If we do not pass this bylaw, that stays in place. If we do pass this bylaw, now, somebody such as DMCTC that wishes to do light manufacturing, not general manufacturing, but light, could now at least come to the Zoning Board of Appeals and seek a special permit to operate. Doesn't mean that we're going to then become the marijuana product light manufacturer capital of Massachusetts as a result of doing this.
All right. Thank you. I'll let the record show, there is no money from the Planning Board in this wallet. In fact, it's rather sad that most of the papers in this wallet are white rather than green. Is anyone else who has a new comment or thought on this, or anyone who's spoken before who has a new point to bring forward? If not, then since my love for you, being here as our legislature is constant, oh, here we go. I was going to say, my love for you all is constant, but the love of the mosquitoes appears to be increasing, and therefore concise statements are particularly encouraged.
Joe Strzokowski, 196 Christian Lane. Just moved here last year, spent 30 years on the Select Board and Planning Board in Conway. And my only comment is about odor. We, we had a nasty situation in Conway with a crower who was also going to extract, and that's the word that caught my attention. And extraction of marijuana can be a very odorous, odoriferous, whatever word you want to use. And I hope that your bylaws, or whatever you're proposing, would address the odor problem. We live not too far from Yankee Candle, and I know you had problems with smelling candles. And I suspect in this zone, you should pay a lot of attention to odor control at this particular site, if you're talking about the Sugarloaf Shops. Maybe your client could address odor control in extraction.
I have no client.
Or, I, the person proposing?
There's an opportunity that's been extended, should you wish to have any additional comments on this.
So this proposal specifically prohibits extraction. That's exactly what is excluded in the proposal, is no, no extraction may be done under this, under this proposal. It's just assembly, putting pieces inside boxes and putting stickers on it.
Okay. Does that address your concern? Thank you. All right. One last round of opportunity for questions regarding Article 21. for questions regarding Article 21. It does require a two-thirds majority, and I would ask two members of the Select Board, if I may, to be my counters, dividing between this line here and there. So one member for there, one member for here.
I'm going to take Mr. Strasinski and Mr. Smith, and you take from the red cap.
Okay, very good. All right, so this is the seventh inning stretch. You will need to extend your card for longer than usual. All those in favor of Article 21, as read, please raise your card and prepare to be counted. And your count is?
I have two on my side.
Okay, so we have a total of nine votes in favor. All those opposed, please raise your card. In the judgment of the moderator, it is not necessary to count the cards. The measure has not passed by the two-thirds required. We thank everyone for their opinions expressed and coming forward to participate in this, and also thank the petitioners for their interest in this issue. All right, we now move to miscellaneous articles, and as mentioned before, I hope that we can keep our remarks short so that the mosquitoes will as well. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article 22, that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $14,674.36, being the total of the unexpended balance of funds appropriated under Article 23 of the warrant of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, $15,000, and under Article 18 of the warrant for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, $10,000, for purposes of compliance with Chapter 253 of the Acts of 2020, an act relative to justice, equity, and accountability in law enforcement in the Commonwealth, for expenditure by the Police Department for the purchase of firearms, including replacement of rifles, handguns, and parts and accessories.
Second.
Article 22 has been moved and seconded. Would anyone like to raise a question? Yes, please, ma'am.
Nancy Telenian, 19 Poplar Hill Road. I have two very brief questions. First, I assume the current police force is in compliance with this important law, with the expenditures that have already been spent. But if the rest of the money is used for something else, how is the police force going to continue to stay in compliance? Should new officers be hired and need to be trained and so forth? And my second question is, if the funds are spent on firearms, what happens to the existing weapons? I'm just concerned that some police in other cities and towns sell their weapons to dealers, and some end up in the hands of criminals and are used to kill people. Thank you.
Sorry, before you leave, could you clarify, your first question is, what happens if the money is used for something other than the purpose as stated?
Right, in terms of continued compliance with the state law.
All right. Yes, I'd invite the police chief, please, to speak to this and then open it up to broader discussion.
So the initial compliance started back in 2021. That required our part-time police officers to attend additional training to maintain their compliance with the new regulations. So that is now completed. That was a three-year process. That's completed. So anybody new that comes in has to meet that requirement. So if somebody brand-new coming in would have to go to the full-time academy instead of going to a part-time academy and then having to do additional training. So that's the way it's set right now. The three years of getting into compliance is done. So there is no more legislative compliance that we'll have to spend these funds on. The second point was, our current weapons will be traded in to the dealer. We're not going to, we don't have the ability, we can't sell them to somebody else. We have to either trade them in or keep them. So they're going to be traded in to the dealership.
Is that going to address both of your questions? Okay.
That's it.
While we're waiting, is there anyone else who's going to want to speak to this? Please, go ahead.
So I just was trying to ensure that there is budget for that training if additional people are hired. And second, I was hoping that the weapons wouldn't go to dealers because from then, from there, these very dangerous weapons could be sold to anybody the dealer wants to sell them to and be used in crime. Okay, that's it.
So as far as trading them in, selling them to the dealer, that's our option other than keeping them. Budget-wise, we can get something for these for trade-ins, so that helps offset the cost. So that's, our only option is to trade these in instead of having guns sitting around the station.
I would point out that the question of how do you spend the rest of the Police Department budget is outside the scope of this particular article.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to Article 22, please? Go ahead. So to reiterate, everyone, this is entirely regarding a particular set of funds for a particular set of expenditures listed here in the article. Thank you.
Brian Fitzgerald, I've been up here three times. I think you all know me by now. Just retired from the Marine Corps, 23 years. The importance of new weapons is a huge priority for the safety of this community. If you're working with old weapons, I don't care if it's rifles, pistols, it's dangerous, right? They don't go off. We've all seen in the news what's happened right in front of us at schools. And two, just to clarify, when it gets traded into the dealer, it goes to a federal firearm license dealer. That dealer cannot just sell those weapons to anyone on the streets. Actually, none of us can buy AR-15s, period. It's law enforcement only. So they will not fall in the wrong hands unless they don't secure those weapons properly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And to remind us all, the disposal of weapons is not the subject of this article. Are there any questions related to the article itself that have not yet been raised? Seeing none, we proceed to a vote. Please, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, it passes by the majority required. Thank you all of you for your questions.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23. I move that the town vote to amend certain fees of the cemetery commission as outlined in the warrant pursuant to general law, Chapter 114, Section 23.
Second.
All right, Article 23, regarding grave openings for urns and sales of cemetery plots, is now opened for discussion. By virtue of lasting this long, you've all earned an opportunity to speak. Seeing none, I guess we'll put that one to rest. All right, all those in favor of Article 23, please raise your card. All those opposed, Article 23 passes by the majority required. The next article is Article 24. Do we have a motion in favor of Article 24?
Yes, motion in favor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Our town administrator reminded me something about this article, which has now completely escaped me, so perhaps you could remind us all.
The Executive Director for the Franklin Regional Council of Governments is here in case there are any questions about the charter amendment.
Would the Executive Director like to make, speak regarding this? You're invited to do so.
Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Dunn-Lavy from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Where the charter is our governing document. It was created about 28 years ago. We've never tried to amend it because it requires two-thirds vote of two-thirds of town meetings, but we've hit that already. We'd still love your affirmative vote. The changes to the charter really reflect the evolution that the Franklin Regional Council of Governments has experienced over the last 28 years, and just gets things up to date because someday I may actually retire.
All right. There's your incentive. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, this will require a two-thirds majority. Raise your card if you're in favor. All those opposed, it passes by the two-thirds required. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take up Article 25, Adoption of Hero Act Optional Tax Exemptions, from Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clauses 221, 220I, and 22J. Should I keep reading?
No, I don't believe that's necessary.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, sorry. Anyone who would like to discuss the unread parts of this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your card. All those opposed, Article 25 passes by the majority required, and the moderator will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, you know what to do. All opposed, you're welcome to remain. Okay. We declare the annual town meeting of Whately for June 3, 2025, to now be in recess.